The first item of business is the approval of minutes for the executive session of November 30th and the regular session of the same date. We can take an appropriate motion on approval unless there are any alterations, so move by Ms. Vera Rogers. Seconded, all in favor? The next item is public comment, and now is the time for anyone in the audience that has anything to say on tonight's agenda to come forward, come right ahead. Please introduce yourself. How are you, Mr. Mazanson? Nice to see you.
Very well. Mayor Howard, good to see you. My name is Kenny Mazanson. I am the president and founder of the Malden Neighborhood Basketball League. I come to you this evening because I had sent an email to the members about two weeks ago looking for some assistance because there are two programs from the city of Malden that are both involved in youth basketball. My own program, the Neighborhood Basketball League, which is for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, all from the city of Malden, who do not play basketball for their high school team. The other program, the administrator is not here because he's the girls' high school basketball coach, and he's at practice right now, is hoping to get here later, is Joe Levine, who runs a youth program for girls and boys that are elementary school age. And the purpose of my request to come before you is that it came to my attention that Mr. Levine rents out the Salemwood School on Thursday nights from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. and he has to rent it out for the minimum of a three-hour block pursuant to the contractual arrangements with the city of Malden. The truth of the matter is, he only uses it from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. because the age of the girls are such that they can't stay out any later, so he schedules the one game and then they're done, but he has to pay for the three hours. I, on the other hand, am renting Malden High School for the 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock block of three hours, where I use it for six of my eight teams. Three of the teams are there from 7:00 to 8:30, three of the teams replace them from 8:30 to 10:00, and the other two teams have to practice elsewhere. For the last several years, we've had to go to one of the K-8 schools to accommodate the other two teams. So because we're using the K-8 gyms, which only have one court, we can only have one team practicing at a time. So one team goes in from 7:30 to 8:30, and one goes in from 8:30 to 10:00, and we've been using the Linden School the last year and the Ferryway School the year before to accommodate these two teams. Those two teams for one night have cost our program before the increase about $1,400-plus a year just for those two teams to practice. As you're well aware, the gym rental fees have gone up again for starting this season, where the total amount of cost for my program this year is going to go over $10,000 in total. I started this program 25 years ago where the total expense was $2,500 for the gym rental fees. We were able to charge the kids $25 registration fee. We've gone up as the costs have gone up. We went up to $60, we went up to $40 first and $60, and then as of the July 1, 2007 increase, we had to go up to $80. And there's only so much you can ask the people from the city of Malden to cough up for a registration fee, so we voted as a body to only go up $4 apiece to $84, which meant that I have to find ways of cutting costs to meet the additional expense. For the same amount of hours that we rented the gyms last year, it's going to cost my program about $1,900 more this year. So what I'm looking for is to see if it's possible for the Malden Neighborhood Basketball League to share that three-hour block with the, I'm not even sure the name of this program, Malden Youth Girls Basketball League, to go in there when they're finished at 8:30 and piggyback off of their time from 8:30 to 10:00 because it would cut his costs in half if I was paying for half, and it would certainly cut my costs in half because I wouldn't have to rent the gym for three hours, because the Salemwood School has three courts, and I'd be able to have both of those two teams practicing at the same time rather than one after the other. I've brought copies of our budget so you can see what a breakdown, what it costs for me to run this program. I found that last year I was a professional fundraiser that happened to be running a basketball program. In order to cover the expenses, we ran six fundraisers in addition to sending out sponsor letters, in addition to passing the hat at games, and it's becoming more and more increasingly difficult to make that dollar stretch out. And so, as I said, what we're trying to do is find ways of cutting costs. I think that this would be a win-win situation because Joe's program is paying for time that he's not using. I'm looking for half the amount of time that I really would need if I could have the additional court and therefore spend half the amount that I would have otherwise if I had to use the Linden School. So if you don't mind, I'd like to pass these out. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Right ahead. Do you want to continue? We don't, normally at this particular point on the agenda, we don't have a question-and-answer session.
Okay.
Anybody who comes forward is allowed to make their presentation, and obviously at the end, we're going to take it under advisement. I know that later on in the agenda, we have the school facilities rental agreement as a topic, whether or not it gets folded into that, referred to the appropriate place. My guess is your point is well taken and be taken under advisement.
Okay. Thank you for your time and for your consideration on the matter. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mazanson. Chair proposes to take, excuse me, an item out of order. We have representatives from the Bunker Hill Community College here, and we appreciate their coming to Malden and telling us a little bit about what it is that is happening at Malden High School. And by way of introduction, I suppose we could have Mr. Brown come forward and give us an introduction on this topic.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Do you want to hand those out?
Sure. We have a handout that can go to every, and then I'll let... About two years ago, we initiated discussions with Bunker Hill Community College through former Director of Guidance, Joan O'Hara, and over a series of meetings with Joan O'Hara and me and Sid Smith, and I have with us tonight from Bunker Hill, Donna DeSimone and Bill Sakamoto, and we've actually done it in both places, where they've come to the superintendent's office for meetings, and we've gone to the vice president's office at Bunker Hill for meetings. And we think we've come up with a winning formula. We have, we just completed spring registration for Malden High School students.
Still ongoing.
For the semester. We have anywhere from 30 to 40 Malden High School students will be taking courses at Bunker Hill in the spring, and I think that number will grow. So if I could just hand this off a little bit to Bill and Donna and have them talk about the memorandum of agreement and what the program looks like at Malden High School, and I'll take a step back, but I'll be able to answer any questions you have about how it impacts Malden High School.
Thank you, members of the school committee, for inviting Bunker Hill to share some information about this pilot collaboration that's in our first year. Originally, did you pass these out?
Yes.
Okay. These are notes for what we were going to cover, but we'll shorten this because this was a little longer. Originally, it was going to be around a half an hour, so I'll run through this quickly. But Bunker Hill Community College, part of the strategic plan as formed by President and executive staff Mary Feifield, is to promote immigrant success and to create pathways for college programs. Malden High School is actually one of our best partners now, as far as the number of students graduating that come to Bunker Hill. I think they're number one in the whole Boston system. But that doesn't mean we can't do a better job. So part of our strategic plan is to create more pathways and more support services to promote student success and getting students to go to college, whether it be Bunker Hill or other colleges. So when we were approached by Malden, Dana Brown and Sid Smith, to discuss a presence of Bunker Hill at Malden High School, it seemed like a great fit because it was part of our strategic plan, and it looked like it was part of the goals that were set for Malden High School, develop some programming for the older immigrant population here that don't necessarily fit into the traditional courses at Malden, and to create more pathways through dual enrollment and allow students to take courses at Bunker Hill at Malden High School. So it was a great fit because we need space, we're backed out with space at Bunker Hill, we're at 11,000 students, and because we have a presence or a lot of students from Malden, it seemed great. Some timelines, we had a lot of meetings. I want to thank Dana and Sid and all the staff that were involved because without their participation, we would have never got it off the ground, and it happened pretty quickly. But we did start negotiations in the summer. We have a pilot memorandum of agreement that you had, and it's only for one year to be negotiated at the end of each year, and that was developed and signed around the end of the, or the beginning of December. We were very aggressive in implementing this, so we offered some courses in the spring, although we only had two or three weeks before the spring semester began. So we offered two courses in writing for, at Malden High School for Bunker Hill students and Malden High. A few things for the memorandum agreement, you have the agreement, but I'll just go over the highlights. We're to offer courses at Malden High School, but we're to reserve eight to 11 seats for each section offered here for Malden High students. So for those students who meet the prerequisites of, for whatever course we're offering, we would allow them to register free of charge. Malden High and Bunker Hill would work together in the intake process, and we would begin to offer special programming for some of the older students that come to Malden. Some of the accomplishments, and Donna, you want to talk about these?
Sure. Hi, everyone. What we accomplished in the Spring '09 semester, there were 40 students from Malden who took the Accuplacer test, which they're required to take before they can register for a course. And we had 33 students in total who took courses. 23 took a course at the Malden High School site, and then we had 10 additional students who took courses at Bunker Hill. If you look at the, I don't know what page it is, they're not numbered, but 78% of the students who took a course at Malden High School passed with a grade of C or better, which is really remarkable. And 70% of the students who took courses at Bunker Hill, who were Malden High School students, passed with a C or better. And of that group of, say, the 28 were seniors, 12 of them matriculated at Bunker Hill for the Fall '09 semester. So some of the services that we provide through the dual enrollment program, we have a dual enrollment coordinator at Bunker Hill, and that person works with the liaison from Malden High School. And the liaison brings students over in a group, they take the test at Malden High School, the Accuplacer, they are helped through the registration process, they receive mentoring throughout the semester, and as Bill mentioned, they don't pay for these courses, but they earn credit at the high school and at the college. And a lot of the students have the opportunity to complete prerequisites so they can come into the college or any college in the system and hit the ground running. They don't have to spend their time doing developmental courses, so it's really a great thing for them. We also hired two staff to sit at Malden High School while the courses are in operation on Tuesday and Wednesday nights. There's a staff assistant who's there while the class is run to answer questions, to help students, and then there's also a lab assistant for the two science courses we offer.
The lab assistant is actually a Malden High student that we pay to work for.
Yeah, so we pay for those two staff members to make sure that there's support for the students while they're at the high school. You want to do that?
Okay. So we started with two courses, the Fall of '09, we expanded to 13 courses. 35 Malden students completed the Accuplacer, there are 30 enrollments, and the courses are now in math, English, psych, social, history, science, criminal justice, and ESL. For the Spring '10 semester, it begins January 25th, we've already tested 46 students on Accuplacer and have registered 46 students now. That's great because there's a long ways to go in our registration process. And we now have eight enrollments in the ESL program, so we'd like that to grow, but we still have two or three weeks to enroll students from Malden. For the Summer '10 semester, we're planning to offer an emergent math course. So many of the students at all of the high schools, over the course of their career, they forget some of the basic math, they have to retake the Accu, or take Accuplacer, and then they place in the developmental math courses. So we're doing a pilot over the summer that will be free for all students, but those coming to Bunker Hill as matriculated Fall '10 students. And we would offer a three-week program in July, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 12, to see if we can bump them from one level to a next. So that would save them time, money, and get them running, because math, as you all know, is, you know, problematic in the United States. So students forget the math, so we would think that a refresher course over the summer would be a very, very positive experience and worthwhile for our students. If it works, then we would like to fully implement this for, you know, hundreds of students over the summer, and this is fully endorsed by the president of Bunker Hill. We're also implementing an online Accuplacer Math Review, so there's some students who don't need a three-week program. They can just do some review materials over two, three, four hours. It'll be free of charge, so we've developed this as an online option for students, comes under my area because I'm also the dean of distance education at Bunker Hill. So we're going to pilot this with all high school students coming to Bunker Hill but any Malden High student. So they can take the Accuplacer, retake the, I mean, go through the review course, retake the Accuplacer, and see if they place into another level. So that's basically it. So it's off to a great start, and we thank Malden High because without all the staff and the support of the superintendent and Dana, this could have never got off the ground so quickly. We've tried with some other high schools, and this has really been the most successful program that we've had. We think it could be a model in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Add anything, Dana, or any questions?
Just, one of the highlights for us, obviously, we have turned some kids around with the idea of taking a college course. Some kids who are advanced students who want to, you know, go to college, but also some struggling students who haven't found their niche at Malden High School, by throwing them into an adult community, an adult course, whether at Bunker Hill or Malden High, we've turned some kids, so it's been positive. And I know it was either Donna or Bill called me last year and referenced that the president of Bunker Hill had referenced Malden High School during her commencement exercise speech about this program, so we were very proud of that.
Questions on the, from the student representatives?
I just wanted to know what some of the fees are for the classes. I'm not really too aware of all the fees that there are.
With, in the memorandum, there are no fees for the courses. There's no tuition or fees, and towards the end of the summer and beginning of the semester, we were able to work out a loan program for the books with Donna as well. So a lot of our Malden High School students got the text on a loan basis, so they saved a tremendous amount of money on the book as well. So there is no tuition, there are no fees, and there is no book charge, and we'll go semester by semester on the book because it depends on what the courses the kids have taken. But I think it's a tremendous win-win for Malden High School.
If you were to pay for a course, it'd be $378 for a three-credit course, and then add another $126 for a four-credit course because we are offering two science courses at Malden High.
Other questions? Ms. Grob, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, just for the classes that are offered at Malden High School, how are those classes decided, you know, what is going to be offered at Malden High? How do you make that decision?
Well, initially, we worked on, we discussed this with Dana Brown to see what was of interest to students. The councilors got involved because we do hold a series of informational sessions with the Malden High seniors or juniors and seniors interested in taking courses. So we work with the councilors and the students to determine what courses would be popular. We also target those courses that are transferable because these are just like AP courses, at least at college-level courses. So if you weren't, earned a C or better, whether you go to Bunker Hill or another four-year school, you can transfer these courses in and have one less, two less courses to take when you start your college career. So we target some of the core courses that all students have to take, like writing, math, couple of science courses, psych, sociology. The ESL courses are targeted for that special population, and we do offer some developmental courses for students that need review and maybe writing, reading, and math. And again, if they take that course, then they can place into a college-level course the next semester, or take a course in the summer and so forth. So as we move forward with this initiative, you know, we'll be hopefully expanding courses based on the needs of the Malden High students, the adult population in Malden, and some of the needs at Bunker Hill.
Great. Well, I just asked that question just earlier. They had a meeting about the VOK education, and someone had said about health services. And I see there on, at the Chelsea campus, there are a lot of medical coding, concept of diseases, and that was something that, you know, was discussed, so just wanted to see if there was some transferability to add some of those things, if that's the direction that we decide to go with our VOK education.
Well, as in, the medical coding program at Bunker Hill requires you to take College Writing I, a computer course, Bio 108, which is human biology. So we're offering College Writing I, we're offering a math prereq, and we're offering, did I say the human biology course? And those are courses that lead into other programs.
Great.
And most of the college-level courses, or all of them, are, again, they're core courses for the general education requirements for all Bunker Hill two-year programs and some of the certificates, so.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Altrino.
Just quickly, thank you for coming tonight, Professor. Great opportunity for the children of Malden, something that we would be foolish if we didn't enter into an agreement. Question on the renovations, Mr. Brown. Over the next year, two, maybe three years, as you know from Bunker Hill, we're doing a great renovation plan. Will you be able, Mr. Brown, to schedule so that we don't, it doesn't interfere with the courses, et cetera?
We think we will. This year, we have everybody on the same floor for classes, and we're all on one horseshoe in the, on the second floor of the B building, except for the two science classes. And those are both taught by the Malden High School science faculty that have those rooms during the day, so it's worked out very well for us. And we anticipate that we'll be able to do the same thing over the next couple of years. I don't want to speak for Bunker Hill, but in conversations, part of the attraction of teaming with Malden High School, obviously, is over the next couple of years, we're going to get new science spaces, new, maybe health spaces, new VOK ed spaces, whatever we're going to get. So that's part of the attraction of them and us joining together, and I really do think it's, it's great for both sides.
So it's not tying your hands anywhere?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Other questions, Karen? Mr. Winslow?
I just had, just looking at the memorandum, it talks about that a certain number of students will get free tuition, and I assume that, I mean, like for a science course, 11 seats for Malden High students. There might be as many as 20 or 24 students in the class then? So for the, those 11 slots for Malden High, how, let's say there's 15 students who want to take that course, how would that be selected? I mean, is it based on financial need, academic achievement? What would be the criteria?
Well, I had this conversation with a young lady today, Steve. We had more kids place into the courses than we had seats, but we gave the preference to a senior who needed the course for graduation versus the junior who can pick that up at another time. So our guidance, we've appointed one of our guidance staff as the liaison to Bunker Hill, and we work very closely with Gretchen at Bunker Hill. She runs the program, so we're in almost daily communication with them. How many seats do we have? Who's going to be placed into those seats? We've had three informational meetings for students alone at Malden High School. If you're interested in a course, you have to come to a meeting, come to another meeting, come to another meeting, because we really need a commitment from them to fill the seat and then to stay in the seat because we're mindful of the fact that they could be taking the seat of another student. The seats aren't unlimited, so we have to set up some criteria for, for who gets, you know, who gets the seat. We, we tend to go with the seniors who need it for graduation and then work our way backwards. Although I will tell you, we have at least one sophomore that I know of taking one of the advanced courses over at Bunker Hill, so.
Yeah, just quickly, because I didn't mention this, so there's also dual enrollment monies that come from the state that was initiated last year. Unfortunately, they cut it by almost 50%, and it's for all high school students. So there are a number of Malden students and students from other high schools taking courses at the main campus, and that could be any one of those courses that you see in that course schedule book. As long as they have the prereq and they sign up before the class is filled, then that's not a problem, except for funding-wise. And hopefully, the state will be increasing this funding for our schools. The Malden deal works out great because we can enroll many more Malden kids. Like, we have 50 students just coming in for the spring semester. If you miss the fall semester, there are opportunities for the spring, and again, there's some leftover money from dual enrollment and from some college funds for summer enrollment. So try to provide something for all students, although as this continues to grow, you know, that will be a little problematic.
I just wanted to say, too, if you look at the notes here, we had 10 students at Bunker Hill, as Bill mentioned, and those students were paid for, out of the dual enrollment program that the president funds or the state. So those students were students who wanted to take a course that wasn't available at Malden High School, so they were able to come over onsite at Bunker Hill and do that. So I don't think that in reality, at this point, anyone has been turned away. We have, you know, priorities established, but at this point, no one's been turned away, so.
I hear Mr. Winslow. Other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my thanks to Bill and Donna. It's often when you try to collaborate with folks from higher ed, you just find out that there are more hurdles than you can imagine, and yet... there are more hurdles than you can imagine, and yet, this whole relationship has been quite the contrary. I mean, anytime there was any hurdle, they were the first ones to help us tear it down. And it's really been a great collaboration. And then lastly, I know in her retirement, Joan O'Hara watches the school committee meeting every single time it's on. I just want to give another thanks to Joan O'Hara, who really played a big role in getting this started, so thanks.
Ms. Verratti?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank you for attending today. As a matter of fact, I met with the CEO and the president of Bunker Hill Community College last week, and he told me of this mutual endeavor that we're approaching. If I recall correctly, many years ago, didn't Bunker Hill Community College have the Fenway, which provided that, remember that, what is it? What is it, a trailer that we had classes for students coming through from Boston?
Yes, it's modular buildings in some of our classrooms, and Sid Smith was the person that got that started. They moved on to bigger space and so forth, because even at that time, we were limited with space, and we only had maybe 6,500 students. We have 11,000, so.
In the same space.
In that same space. So, every nook and cranny of the college is being used by the president. We have a weekend college program that has 3,000 enrollments. We have a distance learning program that has another 2,500 students. We started some midnight courses, and believe it or not, they ran, so there's three courses this semester, and we're offering some courses at nine o'clock. So, basically, our president has, she has us running year-long from seven in the morning to midnight, fall, spring semester, and the summer, she hasn't given us those hours yet, but I say yet. So, yeah, she's been great at developing services, flexibility in programs, and trying to accommodate the needs of all students in our service area and even beyond. So, without her support on this initiative, we wouldn't have gone anywhere. And as you said, glad as you talked to Jesse Thompson, who's his executive VP but second-in-command, and he's the one who also is in charge of all the finances, and he helped come to an agreement with Malden High School and the superintendent.
Well, I also want to congratulate you on your new gym, and good luck to you in your basketball season.
Thank you.
Couple of questions from the chair, if you don't mind. What are the range of ages and the kinds of backgrounds from the other adult students who participate in the classes with the students from Malden?
Well, believe it or not, we have, the average age of a Bunker Hill student is 29. So, we have them coming in, we have some kids in home programs that are 13, 14, and 15, not a lot. And then we have students as old as 70 starting programming. So, I've been there a long time. The oldest student I worked with started his GED prep when he was 70 years old, got his two-year degree at Bunker Hill, and then got his four-year degree at BU. So, it's, it's a very diverse institution. There's 60% women, 60% students of color. We have a large international population, so we have over 700 students from almost 100 countries now. So, it's, that's one of our strengths, and we listed a strength at Bunker Hill, our diversity.
So, the residents of the city should know that even though you're not too far away in the Orange Line, which is just a couple of stops down here from Malden Station, they can, if they desire to do so, take a look at your course offerings at Malden High School, and as room allows, be able to participate in the selection of courses that may exist there.
Sure, for sure.
It's an important feature, I just, that's how I got started. The only reason I mention it is because that's what I did. I probably, I was one of those struggling students that Mr. Brown mentions existed in high school, and I probably wouldn't have been smart enough to know. I should have taken one of these kind of transitional courses. I worked for a couple of years, but came back to the educational system. I went to assist a community college, it's North Shore Community College, which offered evening courses at Malden High School. That's exactly what I did before I was really ready to commit to a college campus. I took two, two groups of two courses, evenings, and then eventually went to the North Shore Campus in Beverly and went on from there. Ended up here, but, you know, kind of circular journey, but my point is, the availability of the courses at that location kind of opened a gateway for me as a young adult. I appreciate the fact that Bunker Hill has reached out.
That's great.
One of the benefits, too, to the Malden High School students is that they're taking courses with adult students, so they can model the behavior of the adult students, and it really helps them be prepared before they transition to college, to have an awareness of what behavior is expected to be in, you know, a college setting. So, it's really helpful for them. I just wanted to.
Thank you very much. Hope I'll be with great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Going back to the regular agenda, we're on item, items number four and five, accomplishments and superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I have two accomplishments I'd like to mention this evening. The first one is that we recently received notification that we successfully won a $150,000 grant from Department of Education. The funds come through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act titled 2D Technology Competitive Grant Program. And just to give you a thumbnail sketch of what we're doing, we wrote a grant to start what we call 21st Century Classrooms. We're piloting it in the high school during the second semester, starting with a couple of history classrooms and working with other history teachers, and then eventually science teachers, and in the second year, moving it down to the middle school level. And what we're doing is what we call, we're building technology-rich, research, and inquiry-centered collaborative learning environments. That's a mouthful to just talk about. We're getting netbooks for every student in each of those classes, and we're going to use the netbook not only as a, as a work tool and a communication tool, but also as a research tool. What we're really interested in is seeing how far within our classrooms we can have our kids not just study history, but truly be historians, and they will all be wireless, web-based, and in our science classrooms, not only have our kids learn about science, but be scientists, and use the netbooks and wireless capacity to access data and way, and to construct data in ways that they've never been able to before. So, I would, I'm really excited about this and would invite all of our committee members somewhere in the middle of second semester to visit some of these classrooms. I think you're going to see something quite outstanding. And also have to say, it really is a culmination of two years of professional development work that has gotten us to this point. And these particular classrooms, these are folks who have really taken to heart our objectives over the course of the last couple of years, have been involved in lots of professional development, and the nice thing was, in meeting with those departments today, folks were really able to say, the nice thing about this is it's not something new that isn't an extension of the work that we've been doing up to now. It's not, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater and now trying something new. This is kind of a part of our growth process, so I'm very excited about that. And then secondly, I'd just like to welcome back from Taiwan, our world traveler, Assistant Superintendent Nancy Casabian, who was in Taiwan, and I've asked Nancy, just take a few minutes to talk to you about the work that she did in Taiwan. This is an extension. Over the last two years, delegation from Taiwan has come to Malden, and they were interested in our performance evaluation system as well as our classroom visitation process. And as a result of meeting with them for each of the last couple of years, they invited us to go to Taiwan and to begin training and working with their teacher education force in their two teacher prep universities. And so Nancy just got back from Taiwan, and Nancy, why don't you go to it?
Well, I need to say mi-hao. A very gracious, wonderful, grateful trip. The hospitality was amazing, the courtesy, the diplomacy was one of the most, one of the most memorable trips I have ever taken, certainly. I hope I represented Malden well. I did my very best. They were very grateful for the information that we gave them. I presented at two universities, at the National Normal University in Taipei and at the Kunshan University in Tainan, which is two hours away by high-speed train. I was accompanied the whole time. I met college presidents, deputy ministers of education, deputy ministers of education. They're both regional, district, and national. I was very, very honored, and it was an honor to go and represent my city and my school department. The entire conference was called the International Conference on Evaluation and Professional Growth Cycle, which, as you know, is the name of our evaluation tool. I spoke on our evaluation, the way we, the process, our standards here in Malden. I spoke about the process and how we collaborated with many different parties, with the school committee, with the educational, Malden Education Association, what our relationships were. We're very, very interested. At both conferences, there were anywhere from 300 to 500 people in the audience, a little intimidated. This is the very first time I spoke where I did not speak the language. I speak five languages, as you know, and I certainly know what it is to be in someone else's country and not understand. However, the hospitality and the graciousness I had translated is with me at all times. And if you can see by the handout I just gave you, every one of my presentations was translated into Chinese, and I'll show you in a bit how we maneuvered this on very well. 50% of the participants did speak English and did understand it. And if you see on the slides right now, these are some of the people that actually came to Malden, that came to either, to Tainan, to Kunshan University to come see me again. They were delighted to see me, very happy, and they spoke so high of their experience in Malden, visiting our schools, and the wonderful things our teachers do, which we know anyway. They were amazed at the interaction that goes on between teaching and learning and the teachers and the students, and they took a lot of that back with them. And honestly, this was the very first slide that I used for professional development. This is the slide I use in English, and they translated it. If you can see to the far left, I have the Leonard Zecham Bridge. And to my surprise, as we were driving along in the car off to Taipei, one of the universities, this is a bridge in Taipei. So, immediately, I used this as a connection, the rough, they smiled, and I said, "Our Boston Bridge looks just like yours, and we are bridging education, and we are bridging teaching and learning together." Was a really nice metaphor. Taipei is amazing. It's, it's a very crowded city. It's a wonderful city. People are courteous and wonderful. As you can see, it's colorful. However, if you go further up in Taiwan, the coastline is beautiful, the landscape is beautiful, there are mountains, there are amazing places to visit. So, very, very traditional and beautiful, extremely cultural. The culture is wonderful, simplistic and modern as well. This is a photo of Paul Shu High School. Paul Shu was a comprehensive high school, 4,000 students, 250 people on staff. They were co-sponsors of this conference, and stayed with me the whole time, from the minute I landed to the minute I left. And I have to tell you, I visited classes, they were wonderful, and neither some of the students on the playground, they had four full-size, five full-size basketball courts, and these were some of the students out for gym that day. If you see this sign in any Chinese picture, it means they're happy. So, I learned that very quickly. They love, they were just happy children, loved to see me. This is Principal Tang. She is an amazing young principal, I think the youngest in Taiwan, very forward-thinking. It is a private school. So, she is very forward-thinking, very progressive, and this system of evaluation, she has already started to put in place in her school. Mostly, the presentations that I gave were for the public, the Department of Ministries, the public schools in Taiwan. These are some of the students in the vocational program, the culinary arts at the Paul Shu High School. They had just finished preparing a lunch for a meeting going on in the city. They were getting ready, they were loading it in the van, and this is part of the internship. They were going to be serving the lunch. This particular school had nine vocational programs as well. It was fascinating to see them. Number of students in the class ran anywhere from 40 to 50 students. Teachers teach nine classes a day, 40 to 50 students, heavy, heavy load, very little time in between. I am amazed at their resilience. I am also awed by the respect the word teacher brings in this country. It's absolutely, as we respect our teachers and hold them till we know that they work very, very hard, the word teacher, the word educator there as well holds very, very high standing in society. I spoke to an English as a second-year English class. All of the students in Taiwan are required now to take English from grade three. These students began a little later. These are high school students. They were fascinated with the diversity of Malden High School, asked me wonderful questions. First one was, how old was I? Second, what did I like to eat? And third, what do the kids like in Malden? And I said, "They're just like you." And we talked about not looking at stereotypes of teenagers, but looking at a very diverse population. However, students are students are students all over the world, and these students were happy, giggly, and asked some wonderful questions. This is the beginning of the conference, and Malden was all over the place. There were floor-to-ceiling presentation screens, just like this one. And on the second, at the second university, I was also projected on the wall, which was like larger-than-life, a little scary. The panel included Malden Public Schools, and they also invited Taipei American School, which, as the superintendent told me, was one of the 10 best international high schools in the world. Taipei American School goes by American standards, and let me tell you, we are right up there with them. We are as progressive and forward-thinking, and I was very proud of what I could tell them about the Malden Public Schools, on our formal evaluation, on our informal feedback we give to teachers with our visitations, on our professional development and how we link what we do. It was fascinating to talk to them. I did say my few words in Chinese, and I was thrilled the first time. It was a wonderful way to practice with everybody as they practiced their English with me. Again, this is part of how I presented over there. I presented four times at each university, preceded and followed by forums, discussions, and meetings with college professors. The fact that there's little to no evaluation going on, they wanted models of evaluation. When they came here to visit us, I, I did a presentation as well as Superintendent Smith on how we evaluate, how we give the formal evaluation, and also how we do informal visits with feedback to the teachers. So, they wanted to look at our models. As you know, I can't speak Chinese fluently. My 10 sentences only got me so far. However, I had a translator, and it's a little dark, but you can see that this gentleman was amazing, Professor Li Weiwang, who also came to Malden two years in a row, and as I commented on my slides, he also translated and interpreted for them. I was very sensitive. I was extremely sensitive. Once I visited classes, found out more about their situation, I was very sensitive to what they were facing with nine classes, no prep time, and how something like this can be accomplished in their, in their schools. And the respect and courtesy that they gave me, I tried very, very hard to give it back to them, because that's a very frustrating thing to think of, how are we going to do this? I spoke with some of the deputy, some of the ministers asked me my advice. I told them to start slowly, to start one step at a time, so that the audience knew that as well. Sometimes we did simultaneous translations together. As you can see by that heavy book, that everything I did was translated into the language, so they could read it as well as hear it. For me in English, 50% of them, as I said, spoke or understood English. Another 50% needed the translation or the interpretation. The conference was amazing, as I said, between 300 to 500 educators. I was also the host at the Longshan Girls' School. This is another private school. This principal, principal took me through the school. I again spoke to some English classes. They had just finished reading Catcher in the Rye, and were full of questions about how do we read this and what do we do in our schools? And I talked to them as well about Malden, or what Malden looks like, and what teenagers look like all over the world. Again, happy pictures. The students did dances for me. They were thrilled to see me. I don't think they were prompted, I just think they loved seeing someone visit their campus. And at the very end, some of the pictures that came up, these are the young teachers at the Paul Shu High School. They were darling, and I was absolutely privileged to be able to work with them, talk with them. I sat down with them several times, per the request of the principal, to give them some pep talks and encouragement talks on what... pep talks and encouragement talks on what teaching's all about in Malden and also what teaching means to me. I hope my passion came out, because as you know, I'm very passionate about this, and I hope my passion came out to them. And mainly, mainly, I said to them, I said to the conferences, "This is why we do what we do. It's our kids." The ultimate goal was our kids and our children, whether they are in America, whether they are in Taiwan, wherever they are in the world. Why we do what we do is not the tool itself, it's not the process itself, but we do it just to make education wonderful for our children. So again, I hope I represented Malden well. I loved this experience. I want to thank the Ministries of Education for sponsoring me, and I have to thank Superintendent Smith for allowing me to go and be able to do this. It was a pleasure, a delight, and certainly a learning experience for me. So I have to say xie xie, thank you. And that's what I did for a week and a half.
Thank you, Ms. Casabian.
Thank you very much. Any questions before I go? Okay. First of all, the next item is budget update. As you know, each month, we have the data that we provide you and the pie chart that's available. And if you have any questions, Ms. Oliver is here and can help to answer those. Also, just a note, I wanted to let you know, as I wrote in my monthly notice to you, that we have started to do some work on our FY11 budget. We really don't have any hard numbers to work from yet, but I have asked each of the principals to project and to construct a budget for next year that would represent a 10% decrease in current funds that are available to each of the schools. I am meeting individually with principals now to engage in discussions as to where those funds might come, should we be hit by a decrease of that sort. And in January, I anticipate that we will start to kind of pull the threads together into a draft, as I did last year, you know, starting in January, giving you a draft budget that we can start talking about. We want to make this as thoughtful and deliberate a process as possible, and that's why we're starting even before we have any projections, because certainly, the outcome is not, or the outlook is not rosy. We also have a variety of other issues on the horizon that we may ultimately have to deal with, so this is our starting point. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Are there any questions on any of that? If not, I will move forward. And lastly, I'd like to ask Sally Orm to come forward. Sally, Principal, esteemed Principal, Dr. Sally Orm, Forestale School. As you know, we have, you've had an opportunity to review and discuss the school improvement plans, one for each school, at each of our meetings, and tonight's Forestale. And Sally, it's all yours.
Good evening, everybody. I assume you all have a copy of the school improvement plan in front of you, and I'm sure you've read it all in detail and have questions on each page. Okay. So I'll try to summarize it for you, just some of the highlights, and then open up to any questions that you might have. What I want to focus on is, at first, is just some of what our successes have been and what our challenges still are. And Forestale has come a ways of, we had a number of years where we, our scores, our MCAS scores kept on declining for about four years in a row, and so they were really not in good shape. And we actually were the lowest in the district, or tied for lowest in the district for a while. For the last four years, they've gone up every single year on average, so that's something to be proud of. And they're still not high enough. We want them to get higher, but we do feel like that we're on the right track, and that's the, that's the way we want to go. We don't, we're not looking for real big jumps all of a sudden. Usually, big jumps, or often, big jumps are followed by declines, and so we're really looking at the steady progress. In our scores for this past year, 2009, were actually pretty positive, so we felt like we're doing the right things. We went up in both math and ELA in every grade except for the third grade, and that was at a time when, actually, across the district, there were, overall, the scores went down. That doesn't mean that we were doing better than everyone in the district, but at least we were going in the direction that we wanted to continue going in. The one anomaly there was the third grade, where the previous year, we had had very, very high scores, both in ELA and in math. We actually were higher than the state average in terms of the CPI, which is the number used to determine whether you meet AYP. And then the next year, we dropped down to being close to the average of the rest of the city, which, although, still slightly above. I wish that I had a great reason to give you for why we had this huge jump and then a decline, and I don't, although, one of the things that is, you have to take great caution in, in looking at a school the size of the Forestale, looking at each grade, is that very small numbers of students can make a pretty big difference in percentages when there aren't that many, especially that's true for subgroups. So it can be, when 5% is only two students, a change of 5% or 10% means two to four students, that kind of variation from year to year can look like a bigger increase or decrease than it really is. So again, we have to look at overall what the trends are. So the scores, as I said, did go up in most areas. The ones I want to highlight, aside from the third grade, fourth grade, they went up in all areas. In the fifth grade, the scores not only went up, they didn't go up a lot, but by the cohort, looking at where those fifth graders had done the previous year, they went up significantly. And so that was, again, was one of the things, they had been low in the fourth grade, they went up quite a bit. So we've been looking at the things that we've, that we were doing in the classrooms, what was making a difference, trying to figure what they are, and to continue them. And for the most part, it's the things that we're doing that all the other schools also are, which is paying very close attention to the students who are struggling early on. We meet immediately to look at the monitoring that we're doing of students to see how we might be able to change the instruction that they're getting, do we need to give them, put them in a different intervention program? And that was something that we hadn't done before. That really was, that was new for us last year. So we're continuing, we did certainly find some success in doing that. It's not perfect, but what we've built in this year into the school improvement plan then is just that much more attention to it. In ELA, we, as I said, we do feel like we're actually doing, we're going the right direction. I'm pretty pleased with the results that we have, although we still certainly need, want to do better, and need to, but we've steadily making progress. Math is a little bit different, but math has definitely been more problematic. In our, our math scores, again, we've made progress for the most part, but we have some big areas that, especially in the upper grades, that we're not happy with, and we shouldn't be happy with. We, in grades five to eight, and especially in the middle school, where we've had pretty stagnant levels at some grades of the number of students coming in at warning. And so one of the things that we've done is, this year, we started having a math lab, what we're calling a math lab. It's using the program Riverdeep, which is in the, on the Intranet, since you can get to it on the website. And all of our students in grades five to eight go to the math lab once or twice a week, depending which grade they're in, they go once or twice a week. And what that does is that they start out by taking a test, we set, our math coach set up a beginning level for all students to kind of test out at. And then depending on how they do in that, they either will go back to work on particular skills through a tutorial, or they move on. If they get, I think it's, I think we set it at 80%, if they got 80% correct, they move on to another skill area or a higher level. If they don't, then they go through a tutorial, so that it's able to be individualized for the students. One of the things that, in looking at the MCAS, the types of answers that students got correct and incorrect, one of the things that was interesting to see is that in the upper grades, students were more likely to do, they did better actually in the open-response questions compared to the state than they did on multiple choice. And so for seventh and eighth grade, that tends to mean that they're weaker in their basic skills. They, they're not making good computational decisions, or they forget how to do, and they forget how to find a median or a mode, or they, their division is, you know, not so good. So those are the kinds of things that are relatively easy to remediate, and that's what we can do in the lab. The lab's not going to do a lot in terms of the real underlying concepts of mathematics, but it is good at the skills. And so in the, where they're doing okay with open response, they were not in the skills. Whereas in the younger grades, it was more the other way around, where the skills, they had a little bit harder trouble with the skills, but open-response questions, they didn't do as well. So one of the things that told us, in looking at the questions carefully, is that students have a hard time with, with questions that have multiple steps to them. This is, you know, particularly in math, multiple-step problems, which is either because, and again, it's mostly actually, or it's a reading problem in part, because you have to be able to understand the vocabulary and the way the questions are asked. But it's also about being able to actually follow every step and know that you're answering every part of every question. And that proved to be a much greater challenge for the younger students. And so that's something that we're going to be working on a lot more in class, making sure that every week at least, that the students spend time answering an open-response type question, and that it's analyzed as a group, that they're really looking at it together to talk about whether they have a complete answer, how to interpret a problem. And one way that that is, that we can do, and this is something that is true in all the schools, but we're really trying to emphasize it, is in our K to five math program, Think Math, there's what's called a headline story in each lesson. And that headline story is there to have discussion with the students about the question or about the information given. It's not meant as a, put the problem on the board and have kids solve it, write it in their notebooks, and then go on to the lesson. That's a place where we can really develop the students' thinking about, how do you look at the information that's here and that's presented? What can you tell from this information? What can't you tell from it? What kinds of questions might you be able to answer? To really get at building their, their facility with mathematical question answering and asking and the mathematical language. And so it's more discussion, they're brief each day, but then, again, if once a week, approximately, they're answering questions themselves in writing, we're hoping that that will build their ability to answer those open-response questions, which, again, has more to do with their being able to really read and understand and follow all the steps than it does to, than to the calculations themselves. So that's a big part of what our emphasis is there in, within the math class for all students. We have the two subgroups where we have the greatest disparity in scores between the aggregate, either between the aggregate or between the subgroup and non-subgroup, are in special ed and low income. Now, that's not, certainly not unique to Forestale. In looking at the scores in 2008, I was quite distressed, actually, 2007 and 2008, I was quite distressed when I saw the disparity between, like, no low-income and non-low-income students and special ed and non-special ed. It was quite large. And this year, again, I looked at the scores and was quite discouraged because the gap was pretty big. Now, that's not something that's certainly unique to us, but it was a very big gap. But one of the things that I, in a further analysis, I went back and looked at the data again, and also looked at the state and looked at the district. And what I noticed is that in 2009, the art gap was actually smaller than the district's gap in most, not in every grade, in every subject, but in many, and smaller than the states. And that really surprised me because it had been bigger. And so that, again, was something that I was really pleased to see, and I think that comes from the fact that we were, we were paying attention to it and really looking at, what are we doing to really target the special ed students in particular? And what are we doing to make sure that we're reaching all the students? We still have to do a better job of that, but we are much more targeting the instruction, both interventions, but also just within the class, making sure, for example, during a math class, that teachers are working with a small group of students who they know tend to struggle and in the past had just been kind of having to hang in there with everybody else. And so now, using in part of that math block time to be able to sit with a group of students, work on problems with them. And that's happening now in, I can't say this happening in every class every time, but it's one of the things that we're working more and more on doing and helping teachers know how to do it. They're used to doing it for reading, but it's newer, doing it in math, and in feeling like it's okay for them to do it. It's one of the things we've had to kind of give permission to, you can have a group set aside and work with them individually, even if it doesn't say in the curriculum that you have to do this. Teachers have been working, really trying hard to follow what Think Math says and follow the curriculum to the letter as much as they understand that. And so trying to help them see where they can do things a little differently, or that still fit in with following the program, but really target those kids, I think, is helping. We also have this year, one of our special ed teachers at the lower grades focused entirely on math. And we have two interventions that we didn't have before being used. One is Touch Math, and we just had training this past summer that the special ed department provided. And so that our primary grades, well, K to four, student support teacher is just doing math, she's doing a lot of the Touch Math. She's also doing regular monitoring of students using Ames Web, which is a computer-based system. It's a computer-based system just for keeping track of how kids are doing, similar to how Dibbles is used, if you're familiar with some of the record kind of monitoring there. But it's something where you assess the students, can be every two weeks, can be every month, you can decide how often. And that's something we hadn't done before. So again, that's one of the ways we're trying to just pay really close attention to how these kids are doing. Another change, with that person doing math, the other support person is just doing reading, so she's able to really focus on reading. And then we also have a teacher who's dedicated to Wilson, which is an intervention being used at grades five to eight. And that's all she does is Wilson. So she has groups from grades five to eight. Some are very small, maybe two kids, some might have five or six kids. And the whole idea here is that through getting this intensive work in reading, that those kids will be out of the program in a year, maybe two, but hopefully within a year. We've already seen actually quite a bit of improvement in the reading of those kids, so we feel like it's working. So that's, that's a great thing. So I think those are the real, the primary sort of things that we're working on this year, and that the plan, the plan, if you look at the action plan, has many details, but all of the details in there that are listed all fit within what I was just describing in terms of where we're kind of putting our emphasis. And a lot of it is just about paying really close attention to, to the kids who really are struggling and making sure that they're coming along. And when they're not, trying to figure out how to intervene right away and providing the support to do that. We have two excellent coaches. We're really lucky. Our literacy coach, Enzakta, and our math coach, Marta London, are just extraordinary, and they provide so much support for teachers, going in and modeling for them in the classroom and teaching for them. I've done it myself a couple of times. It's something, I was a longtime middle school math teacher, I loved the opportunity to get in, so I went in and taught a couple of math classes for a teacher. So it always helps to have somebody just to watch, to watch what someone else is doing. We're trying to do as much modeling as possible for our teachers. Especially in the upper grades, most of our teachers are the only one, they're the only one there, there's one math teacher, there's one social studies teacher. They have no one else they can really go to, to collaborate with or to observe. And so it's one way we can do that is by having some of the other staff, like our coaches, to go in and do that for them. I think that's basically it for summary. Do you have questions? Any questions I can answer for you?
Questions or comments on the plan? Ms. Altrita?
Thank you, Dr. Orm, for coming tonight, and to your staff as well that are sitting...
My posse?
Yes. Are they there? The bodyguards are...
That is my school council.
Good.
So many of our parents, parents and teachers.
Thank you for the great job you're doing. Just two quick things. One thing is, what would you, in the presentation you made, as you know, we have a tough budget year this year and possibly next year, what's one thing you would be looking for from the school committee to help you support student achievement?
The, the thing that's made the biggest, that's been the biggest help for us, is having the interventionists that we never used to have, literacy assistants that we have. We don't have anything like that in math, but we could not be making the improvements that we are and providing interventions if we didn't have the literacy assistants that are, that we have through the Title I program. We had two last year, one came back this year, and we hired a second to replace the one from last year. And one is a pre-career teacher, this is true last year and this year, one pre-career teacher, one post-career teacher, they're perfect, they're like the ideal literacy assistants. The title doesn't really describe enough of what they do, but if we had math assistants like that, it really could make a big difference. It's very difficult for one teacher to meet the needs of such a wide range of skills and language and everything else in one classroom.
Neat, thank you. The second question I have, I remember you called me probably, maybe two years ago when you were doing your dissertation and extended day, was it? And how's that helping or affecting, or is it too soon to... And how's that helping or affecting, or is it too soon to tell if that's doing anything for the achievement?
My dissertation?
You don't have the, oh, okay. What if, the extended day, when you did your research, you asked me a question, and I'm asking because I keep voting against it. But have you seen in your research, anything, studying Malden, because you did a lot of the studies at Malden too, because you interviewed a handful of people in Malden?
Yeah.
Have you seen that that has done anything to affect student achievement in the district? This is something I've always...
Well, my research was really a case study on Forestale and the experience of going through the process of deciding whether or not to become an extended day school. I didn't do any research on the results after becoming extended day. So it was all on the up to that point.
Do you see anything in improvement? Would it be a fit for something like Forestale?
Would it be a fit for Forestale? I think it, as was true four years ago or five years ago now, I think, again, it would be, it's a community decision that has many different, there are many different ways of looking at it, many, a lot of different lenses to look at. And I don't think it's, I don't think I could say yes or no definitively that would be a good or bad thing. Certainly, we always feel pressed for time, but whether or not that means going to extended day, you know, I'm not sure.
Well, I know you did your research on it, and we spoke at length at one point, so I was, would value your opinion, so thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Altreino. Other questions, comments on the plan? Thank you, Ms. Zon for the presentation.
Thank you.
And that wraps it up for my portion of the superintendent's reports. Any other questions?
Otherwise, we'll move on to items six and seven. The chair will note, Mr. Levine is here, and we thank him for, I know that he came in a little bit late, and I know he was somewhat attended to Mr. Mazonsen's presentation and public comment about the need for the committee to at least consider the policy around facility rentals and being able to share some time and space with other community-based programs. But I give you that opportunity, Mr. Levine, to come up and... Only because you're the basketball coach, otherwise...
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for listening to me for a couple of minutes. I think it's a win-win situation for Kenny and myself because I rent the gym for three hours, and we have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And 10 o'clock's too late for my, you know, the girls to practice, and we use it till 8:30. So from 8:30 to 10 o'clock, the place is empty. I understand that's a rule that we put in that there's no subletting or anything like that, but it's being wasted for an hour and a half, and it's costing me $600, $700. And it's a perfect fit for him, where he has high school students who stay up a little bit later than the younger kids. And, you know, we could share it and, you know, work together and make sure it works out all right. You know, I wish you would just consider it, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Levine.
Any questions on that? I can...
Can't entertain any questions.
No entertaining, oh, no, okay. So thank you very much, and I hope it works out.
Thank you, Joe. Moving on to item number six, deliberations. Item number one under six is relief of the facility's rental agreement. Mr. Winslow brought the topic forward. We'll hear from him.
Yeah, I brought the topic forward based on Mr. Mazonsen's letter and from Mr. Levine. And I just think this is a worthy proposal, very well presented, and, you know, I do support it. I mean, we were looking for groups to come up with creative ways to save the district money by consolidating. And I also like this, that when we have this type of issue come up, that it would come to the committee when we are asking, when people are asking to share rather than having a subletting. So I am supportive of this proposal and would ask that other members be considerate of it.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. I think that doesn't get anything official on the table, but we can go around, Robin.
We, I guess we have possibly two things. We could make a motion to refer this to the facilities committee or if we wanted it, act directly. So I think...
Chair's going to take a couple of points of information here. Now, number one, I thank Mr. Avino in the past for his hard work on the rental policy. I know we've gone through several iterations and deliberations. Mr. Altreino did it a while back before that, and we've tried to come up with the best arrangement, taking into account Malden-based organizations as well and their specific needs. Do we have a superintendent's ability to modify the policy in any way? Isn't there some arrangement whereby the superintendent can...
Final arbiter. Not to change the policy, right, but final arbiter on carrying through and following the policy.
And what's, it's not a good thing to take questions, and so we're on the topic now, so we can take some questions. Now, the timetable for this to be effective for your two organizations is when, gentlemen? You're renting now, and for how long of a period are you renting? Either one of you, now that we're off public comment, but on the topic.
I started renting in November, and we've had the last, you know, five or six Thursday nights. And Kenny hasn't...
And you go until when, though, Joe?
We go until March.
Okay. And Kenny and Mel?
I just had my registration and tryouts last week because I have to wait for the high schools to make their cuts. My first practices are actually this Thursday. And so I actually had called today to confirm that I would have Malden High, but I didn't know whether I had to use the Linden or if I'd be able to use the Salem Wood. So I asked Nancy to put me in for the Linden until I get some sort of resolution on this. And we go to the third Sunday of March.
Okay. So the committee, the next meeting of the committee isn't until the first of January here. If the policy doesn't get changed until January, it's going to help you for a couple of months, but, okay, that's the timeframe and timetable, unless we do it this evening in some fashion, which I don't know that we can entertain. But that answers the question. Thanks, guys. Mr. Avino?
Well, obviously, the superintendent is the final arbiter in all of this, but I would simply say that if we wanted to take some action, quick action, I would be more than willing to submit this to the, refer it to the policy subcommittee and have the policy subcommittee schedule a meeting some morning, an afternoon, early evening, so that we can act upon it and some, you know, give a due deliberation and give these gentlemen a response. Because I think it needs some discussion so as to not to set a precedent where something like this needs to come forward on an individual basis. But I would be more than willing to refer that to the policy subcommittee.
Is that the tension of the body? Think that's the best way to handle it? Get it referred as soon as we can, get some action back, hopefully give you a couple of months of relief on the rental lift of policy is adjusted by the school committee of the whole.
So moved.
Moved to the policy?
Subcommittee.
So moved. Second in favor? Yes, questions? Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, would it go to the policy subcommittee or would it go to the special buildings and grounds that Mr. Avino did? A ton of work on this. I would think it would rather be supportive to go back to Mr. Avino's committee.
I would have no problem sending it to policy or to my committee, whatever. It is a policy. I mean, we voted on it. It's a policy. I plan on bringing it to the policy subcommittee.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a policy now.
Correct.
Should be referred to that subcommittee. Okay, so so moved and seconded all for any other dialogue on the proposal? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We'll get to it as soon as we can. The rest of the agenda. Subcommittee updates? We can hear from any of the members regarding the latest deliberations by any of the subcommittees?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we discussed the policy, subcommittee will take up the amending the policy for hall rentals. And as a matter of fact, I just noticed that we're supposed to be voting on the next, I'll wait, I'll wait, because...
Wellness, yep.
Wellness policy. Can we just go into that?
Well, if there are other, we take any other updates? Anybody have an update? Budget, buildings and grounds?
Budget.
Budget, Ms. Crowe.
Actually, the budget subcommittee met this evening at 4:30 to discuss the data assistant, the technology data assistant that Mr. Smith wants to add to the budget. And so we actually agreed that it was, it's a needed position, and it doesn't really add a position to the budget. It is a transfer of a position. So there's one that he didn't need, there was a vacant position, and so we recommend accepting that and letting him go in post that data position, data assistant.
So is there a motion?
So we'd make a motion to accept the data, the technology data position.
The description of the position? Okay. And that's the reconfigured position coming out of Parent Information Center?
Out of the...
Technology.
Technology.
No pick involvement, yeah?
No, no pick involvement. And it's at, as was mentioned before, it's at a cost less than the position that it replaces.
Okay. So recommended? No, it's so recommended by the subcommittee. Okay. So the motion is now on the table. Any dialogue on the motion? Go right ahead, Mrs. Rivera Rogers.
I have a question. Since, don't we have something outstanding regarding given situation out of the Parent Information Center? Can we move to accept that line item budget with a resolution?
You asking for a point of information?
Point of information, please, Chair.
Employee has moved from the school department to the city operations in, if that's the position you're referring to. So there is a vacancy within the line item in PIC and technology. I thought it was always in PIC. You're proposing...
The position that was vacated was in the, in technology.
Okay. Floated under... So the transition from, for that employee from the school department to the city of Malden has been completed. Paperwork has to be done, but person is now employed as a city of Malden employee.
I was talking about the other one. Okay, that's still outstanding. I was just wondering if it was resolved.
Move the motion, Chair.
Any other dialogue, Mr. Froyo? Done, Mrs. Rivera?
What's the salary on this position?
It's posted, there's a range that's posted as 28 to 32.
Other questions on the recommendation? Otherwise, we'll move the question, authorize it with a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Doc Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
No.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera Rogers?
No.
Mr. Altreino?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Howard?
Passes, but yes. Thank you from that subcommittee work. The, any other subcommittee updates? We'll update the body on the following. Mr. Avino and I, a while back, were given some limited authority to begin the negotiations with Catholic charities for the new space that's being constructed in the east wing of the Brunelli Building. That construction is coming to a close, and in fact, you know, it may be that the area that we're talking about is being done ahead of schedule. So I think Avino and I should get together with the representatives from Catholic charity to be able to close the terms on proposed lease there. So just a heads up that I believe we'll be reporting back to the committee sometime in January, one of the two meetings in January, in an effort to get to an agreed-upon lease. Otherwise, we'll close on subcommittee updates and go to the consent agenda and the vote on the wellness policy that Mrs. Rivera Rogers had referred to is on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee has received a copy of the wellness policy and noted in this wellness policy there was some concern about, let me turn the page. It had to do with professional development, the food service personnel. I'm going to table this for that to be revisited, and the policy subcommittee can meet with the superintendent to discuss this further. So I'm going to table it.
Mrs. Rivera Rogers is recommending a tabling on behalf of the policy subcommittee.
Thank you.
Any questions on the tabling motion? Actually, there really is no debate on tabling. We'll just, take up the tabling motion. Call the roll on tabling motion, please.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Doc Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Altreino?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Howard?
Passes, but yes. We're at the end of the agenda. We can take some points of personal privilege to close out the 2009 session. Would anyone like to start? Or does anyone want to be last? Mr. Avino?
Just a point of information, a word of thanks for the years that Mrs. Gladys Rivera Rogers has put in on working on the Malden School Committee. A job well done. We will miss you, Gladys and Lisa. The best to you in your new endeavors, wherever they may be. We will miss you also. And be sad to see you go, both. And to staff and students in the Malden Public Schools, a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, and happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avino. Standing on the right side. Any closing comments? Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to echo Mr. Avino's comments to Gladys and Lisa. We appreciate all the work you've done, and to everybody else, have a healthy and happy holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. On the far left, Mr. Froyo?
I'd just like to thank Gladys and Lisa, the job they've done in the last two years. And of course, I've been sitting next to Gladys here, getting some pointers, so thank you, Gladys. And Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and Happy New Year to all the citizens of Malden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah, I too want to thank both Lisa and Gladys for their service to the students and city of Malden. It's been wonderful serving with Gladys on the policy committee. She's always has been dedicated to policies that are for the good of the students, so I appreciate that. And Lisa, I know in particular, one passion was special education. I'm sure you will continue on with that, so I appreciate that. Also, wanted to remind folks that at the high school, there is a holiday concert coming up on the 22nd, so please look for that, and wish everybody a happy holidays, happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll leave remarks to the two pouting numbers, but the chair will weigh in before you get your pouting shots. I should probably go last, but I'll go ahead of you. Happy holiday season, safe holiday season for everybody within the school system and to the citizens of Malden as well. And to Gladys and Lisa, thank you very much. One veteran, one rookie, two very classy ladies, great service by Gladys over your eight years. You've done a wonderful job on behalf of your constituents down in Ward Seven and throughout the rest of the city as well. A very productive eight years, I might add, and I think you've served with several different groupings of the school committee, and I think all of them you've left a great impression on. So we want to thank you for the eight hard years that you've returned to the Malden Public Schools. And Lisa, really, you didn't stay long enough, Lisa. It was a great two years, very fine job. You were a great asset at this location on Monday evenings, and we appreciate your commitment on... at this location on Monday evenings. And we appreciate your commitment on behalf of the Malden schoolchildren for two years and maybe some year you find your way back, who knows. But thank you very much for the two years that you were here.
Thank you.
We have a small, we have a small token of our appreciation for both of you. And I'll read off one of them, but it says the same for each one of you. The Malden School Committee and your, both your individual dates of service for your dedicated service to the students of the Malden Public Schools. Thank you very much and good luck in the future developments. So you both have the floor.
Thank you, everyone. It's been a wonderful, unique experience, though quick. My face will still be around. I will be around. You will see me in your circles. So just in case you didn't want to, that's just me. You all do a great job, very dedicated group of people up here, in case any of you don't already recognize that. There's a great bunch of them up here. So help them out and continue working hard, everyone. Have a good holiday, everyone, as well.
I have to read because I'll lose track. As we all know, tonight's my last meeting with the school committee. The people of Malden definitely have not seen the last of me. I've been an active member of the community for many years. I have no intention of changing that right now. I am very happy that while I was on the school committee, I chaired on several committees, being policy, safety, negotiations, subcommittees, and some others. This is the end of one chapter in my life. Now it's time for me to turn the page and start a new chapter in the rest of my life. I want to thank the chair for his guidance and leadership. I'd like to thank the school committee with all the decision-making and responsibilities that they have taken on for the community and done a great job. I'd like to thank the superintendent, his leadership team, and I have to say this, Headmaster Brown, for making a difference to us, with our students and our community. I want to, would like to thank the school committee as a whole, my present and my past, and the citizens of Malden, particularly Ward Seven. And last of all, I would like to thank my husband. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion. So moved.